Good evening, welcome to the April 4th Public Work Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note there are emergency exits on either side to the back of the room. Mr. Gavin, I'll turn it over to you for student recognition.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We are super excited tonight to recognize the accomplishments of all of our Winter Athletes. Ms. Rosetto expresses her regret that she cannot be here with us tonight, but we are pleased to welcome many of our coaches, our parents, and our athletes with us today. As an academic institution, our job is to foster the conditions of academic success. Research tells us that when students perform better, they perform better academically when they feel connected to a school, a club, or an academic community. And not only did our students do a great job, our student athletes do a great job on the mat, in the air, some of you guys were flipping, I saw, I went to a couple of gymnastics and they were flipping through the air, that was pretty impressive, on the court or in the pool, they did a great job in the classroom. So I am super proud to say that all of our Winter Teams were designated Scholar-Athlete Teams. Every single one of them were designated Scholar-Athlete Teams by New York State Public High School Athletic Association, which means that 75% of the roster must have a grade point average greater than 90. So kudos to all of you, thank you for doing it in the classroom and in your sports. We have, and I know that they are very busy, and that several of our athletes that we recognize may not even be here tonight because they are in other sports or in other activities. So I will start by announcing the different teams and the different designations that each of our students have earned, and we'll start with our Girls Basketball Team. Girls Basketball Team all reached All County Honorable Mention, so we had Kyla Murphy, congratulations, All County, is Kyla here? Charlotte Rathgen, congratulations. And Dakota Evans, All County Honorable Mention, great job. In Winter Track, we seem to just get, we just continue to seem to get accolade after accolade. Our, their coach, the Girls Winter Track Team is coached by Chris Webster and Kelsey Gregerson, thank you for being with us here tonight. And we're pleased to recognize Claire Bohan as a state qualifier, county and conference champion in the 3,000 meter, all-conference in the 1,500 meter. Great job.
Mr. Gavin, could you stand as you say?
Oh yeah, yeah, sure. We're also, by the way, we're also gonna take a nice big picture at the end, so we're gonna take a nice big picture, no problem. I also want to recognize Cameron Coletti for All County and All-Conference in the 1,500 meter, and, oh, you're too early, it hasn't been shown on TV yet, but she is a News 12 Scholar-Athlete, way to go. I also want to recognize, she's not with us today, I believe she had an athletic competition as well. Lily McGrath was All County and Conference Champion in the shot put. Congratulations to our Winter Track Athletes. Boys Winter Track, coached by Keith Bosch and Keith Lasuk. We had John Fraser, who is not here, he is also in an athletic competition right now. John Fraser placed ninth in New York State overall and placed second in the county, earning All County Honors and Conference Champion as a triple jumper, so congratulations. In gymnastics, we have many, many people to talk about. In gymnastics, we have Ashley Harney as our head coach and assistant coaches Kristen Erling, and, you may, yeah, that's right. I can tell you, I've never been to a gymnastics meet before, and I had a chance to go and watch the young ladies perform, and it was super, super impressive. They are definitely one of the highest level of athletes that I've seen because they could do stuff that most people can't. So, myself included, otherwise I might need traction to get out of any of the things that you guys are doing. So really impressive, overall. We have a number of people that we are recognizing, so can we recognize Olivia Aquaman though for All County Floor, great job. Katie Connors for All County Vault, Bars, Beam, and Floor. Mia DeSalvo, All County Vault, Beam, and Floor. Alexandra Griffo, All County Vault, Bars, and Beam. Cassie Hawkins, All County Vault, and Floor. Ava Jewett, All County Bars. Riley Levine, All County Beam. Erin McCarthy, All County Bars. Nina Napoli, All County Beam. Kendall Pinsky, All County Vault, Bars, Beam, and Floor. Congratulations to our gymnasts. Turning now from the floor exercise to the Swimming and Diving Team, our head coach Ryan Clark and James O'Hara did a great job this year with our boys Swimming and Diving Team. We had Nicholas Rhodes, we're here to honor Nicholas Rhodes tonight, New York State Champion, Automatic All-American Qualifier, Long Island and Nassau County Record Holder, County Champion and Division Champion in the 100 Backstroke, unbelievable. Nicholas was also the County Champion in the 100 Fly, the Division Champion in the 100 Free, and was part of the state qualifying All County and All Division 200 Medley and 400 Freestyle Relay. Thomas McCarthy, who I don't think is here with us tonight, placed ninth in the state and 10th in the Federation, All County on the 1-meter dive, Division A Champion and School Record Holder in 11 different dive events. And Danny Walter, he was also All County and All Division recognition as being part of the 200 Medley Relay and competed at the state championship, so congratulations to the Boys Swimming and Diving Team. Our Boys Basketball Team also had an incredible season this year, it was a fun ride, guys, it really was. Our head coach Jerry DeAngelo is here, Kevin Kennedy and Pat Waldron, thank you very much for your work this year. So, our Boys Basketball Team was state semifinalist, they were Long Island Champions, Nassau County Champions, Conference Champion. Coach DeAngelo was Basketball Coaches Association of New York Coach of the Year, congratulations, He was also Conference Coach of the Year, and before I introduce Mr. DeAngelo, I want to just recognize his players here tonight. Matthew Arnott, William Barrett, James Bavona, who was All-Conference, Matthew DeSenna, Josh Gorrell, All County, Ryan Kennedy, All-Conference, Sean McManus, Amari Mesquita-Robinson, Patrick Mullin, James Murphy, All County, and Team Scholar-Athlete, Robert Pericolosi, All County and Conference Player of the Year, Sam Russo, Frank Sweeney, and Chris Vanco. Mr. DeAngelo, the floor is yours.
Okay, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. Season like this one was special for so many reasons, and requires recognition and thanks to many people. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gavin for his continued support and appreciation of our athletic program and basketball team. To Ms. Rosetto, who continues to support me and the vision I have for the Southside Basketball Program, her advice and confidence is greatly appreciated. To the parents of my players, thank you for creating an atmosphere of acceptance, treating every player like they were your own son. To the Board of Education, High School Administration, thank you for attending our games and showing the players and students how much you care. I'm fortunate enough to have two outstanding assistant coaches, day in and day out, who provide our student athletes wonderful life lessons. They teach our athletes more than just the game of basketball. They teach compassion, sportsmanship, hard work, and most importantly, family. To my manager Neil, thank you for being the heart and soul of our team. Your continual involvement in this Southside Basketball Program is appreciated by all. And finally, to my players, thank you for giving your best and showing how a group of 14 players can come together and do something special when they have one goal. So Mr. Gavin, the Southside Basketball Program, I'd like to present you a little gift. This season, I've told my players that a basketball season is like writing a book. This book has three chapters. Chapter one, everything you want is on the other side of the puzzle. This is the preseason, the beginning of the season, just like any book, you have to get through the introduction before you get to the good stuff. Chapter two, the strength of the team as each individual member, the strength of each member as the team. This is our conference play. It had a lot of highs and some lows. And lastly, but not least, chapter three, is it the journey or the destination, I ask? Neither, it's the company. This is our championship run that crowned us the Nassau County Champions and Long Island Champions.
Thank you. I'm super excited for that. We are gonna take a quick break to do a photo op with all of our athletes here tonight, so if you just give us a little bit of time, we will do some photos, and then we will get you on your way to go eat dinner and go study and do all the other good things that you were doing. So thanks, everybody.
Good, good, good to see you.
Federal funds for school districts and local governments in terms of cybersecurity and school security and that. So, we talked about how the federal government could support schools with federal money there. He was gracious with his time and, you know, was a big supporter of the school district. So, we appreciate that. It is National Assistant Principals Week, so I wanted to thank Mr. Moss, Ms. Nissel-Cross, Ms. Green, Mr. Rosenberg, Ms. Weisenberg, and Maria LaSorza for their work to support teaching and learning at the high school and the middle school. Great job. They work all the time, they go to all these different events, and they support kids in ways that are often unseen. So, we thank you very much for the work that they do. I really enjoyed my first Ed Foundation Gala this week. Thank you very much for the support of our, of the Ed Foundation. We are so appreciative of everyone that turned out on a very stormy night down at Gatsby's in Jones Beach. It was quite a show watching the lightning. But again, it was people coming together to honor the honorees and celebrate a good cause. And this is my first time in the district where we've had an Ed Foundation and it is a wonderful gift for not only the district, but it's a wonderful gift that goes back and keeps giving to teacher, to kids. I also want to, I had the youth sports organization meeting for the first time. I met with all the representatives from different youth sports this week. And I want to thank the representatives from BBL, RVC Soccer, RVC Lacrosse, Youth Hockey, CYO, RVC Rec, Long Island Fun Runners, Essential Synagogue Softball, Soccer Stars, South Hempstead PAL, PAL Lacrosse, and these are my favorite guys, RVC Over 40 Basketball. They were awesome. As we were talking about different ways to, you know, enhance athletic programs and make sure that we have alignment all the way through, we had a great meeting, a really vibrant discussion about partnerships that we can have and how our facilities can help them with their programs as well. So, I appreciate all of the different attendees and their feedback as well. That does not stop. We also had, in this very room, was turned over to our IB art students and they had wonderful displays of their artwork, some of which the talent is mind-blowing, how creative our students are. And it's not just the idea that they have, it's also the form, the function, and the technique that they use to bring it, to bring it forward. So, kudos to all of our IB art students. Then, Dr. Moriarty and I had the distinct honor of going to and performing in the Covert Variety Show, which I thought was an extravaganza, which was unbelievable. We had a lot of fun and we got to introduce all the kids. It was wonderful. Again, that's a, that's a charity organization that funds the Raymar, that, you know, helps to fund the Raymar Children's Foundation. Great job. We also went to, I went to Wilson's Sports Night with the kindergarten and watched them in their, their sports night. I didn't get to see the older kids, but I did get to see the kindergarten. That was great. And I did get a chance to see Wilson's, they have a talent show right now for the older students, so we didn't get a chance to see that, but I got a chance to see the rehearsal for the K-12. And I got to tell you, we've got some talent. We've got some serious talent. When you see a second grader get out there and play Let It Be and sing it on the piano, and everyone in there is like swaying. That was really impressive. So, I'm looking forward to lots of future performers coming forward in either our art department or in red and blue, or you name it, we have future performers in the pipeline. So, that is my report here tonight. I would like to introduce Ms. Love and Ms. Taylor for our goal report on co-teaching, integrated co-teaching.
Okay. So, thank you so much. We're so excited to report the outcomes of the expansion of our integrated co-teaching program. I think first and foremost, we have to thank the board for supporting us last year in this venture. It's really proven to be such a wonderful program for our students, and we're excited to share the outcomes with you tonight. We decided, we worked together, Rebecca and I, so this is Rebecca Taylor, our elementary coordinator for special education, and we talked about what our presentation would look like tonight and thought it would be, the quote that would go with our presentation would be "A picture is worth a thousand words." Because where we can speak to the work that we've done, we'd like to share some photographs of our classes and our teachers and the relationships that they've developed over the last year. And so, if I could just for a minute take a second to take us back in time to a year ago when we were talking about this venture. And our integrated co-teaching program, although it was very good and we were meeting the needs of students, teachers, the special education teacher was in the general education class only two periods a day. And in that time, they would be working very, very hard to meet the needs of the students and address all of the goals on their IEP. So, keep in mind, goals could be math, reading, executive functioning goals, writing, so much to accomplish in a very short amount of time. And our teachers really did a phenomenal job doing that. When I first came into the district, I met with our principals, our teachers, our parents, and looked at our documentation through, as far as our IEPs went. And we just had a collegial conversation about our programming and where we were and where we thought we needed to go. And it seemed that in this case, it would really be beneficial to our students where this program at one point was, you know, 20 years ago, students were not integrated like this into general education. And I really think we have to, you know, for me coming in, I admire that this program could have even been in place at that time. It was really such progressive thinking. Based on what we need to do today with students and the way standards have changed and the demands, that's really where we looked at it and said, in its day, it was progressive and innovative, and it still is, but we just need to increase the amount of time that the teachers are spending with students. And so, that's what we did with everyone's support. And so, at this, at this time, for the last year, we've had full-time ICT, which means that the teacher, special education teacher, is not a floater in and out of the class. I think if you were to ask a student who's in an integrated co-teaching class, "Who are your teachers?", all of the students would point to both teachers. They would say, "Ms. Love and Ms. Taylor are our teachers." They wouldn't say, "I'm a general education student, that's my teacher, and I'm a special education student, and that's my teacher." And we work differently in that realm. They see their environment as one environment that's cohesive, where they're all working together to accomplish, to meet the standards and, and work with all of the students in an equitable way. And so, in one year, we went from this one model to, of two periods a day, to a full-time model in all five of our elementary schools. And so, you know, just to capture what the original model looked like as we talk about the outcomes of our, our board goal to expand our ICT program, and we're looking back at our work over the last year, it just feels really important to just set that foundation of where we were at a year ago and where we are today. And so, again, I have to thank, and I think you would agree, our five principals, our elementary principals, for working so closely with us. And of course, over the last year, Dr. Moriarty, who's joined us, has been such a wonderful support and teammate with us as well in this journey. And we've worked together to accomplish some of what we're going to share now, which is, again, a sense of community, of one classroom, two teachers, where all students are truly integrated for the entire day. And some of the outcomes that we've seen for our general education and our special education students is really quite amazing, and we're excited to share it with you today. And I think the best thing to do would be to start off with a testimonial from two of our first grade teachers from Watson Elementary, who created a video for us tonight.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline. I'm a special education teacher at Watson School, and I work in a first grade ICT class.
Hi, I'm Gina Tomolino. I am the general education teacher at Watson School in the ICT class with Jacqueline.
I have worked as a special education teacher in Gina's class for many years, but this year, having the opportunity to be together full-time, we really are seeing the benefits of this ICT model.
Having a full-time partner allows us the opportunity to teach and plan to ensure that we are meeting the goals of all students, including both the general education and special education students. The children are at a true advantage, having access to two full-time teachers all day long.
We have been able to provide enriching activities for all of the students. For example, we're using all the different co-teaching models, where we break up into small group work, group work, we do station teaching, parallel teaching. All the children in the class are really getting what they need.
And I feel like it's happening all day long. We're constantly modeling our interactions, we're modeling appropriate peer relationships, we're constantly modeling every single thing that the children are doing throughout the day. We're changing.
Planning, organizing.
Organizing. We're really focusing to meet the needs of each individual child, and we truly love the collaboration.
Yeah, and we love working together, which is great.
And it really has just been a huge benefit to our students, and we look forward to continuing this partnership, strengthening our relationship for the benefit of our children.
And I'm definitely, I know we both are actually, really looking forward to seeing the long-term effects of the ICT program.
Because so far, it has been a remarkable experience.
So, it's really fun to see the relationships that our teachers have built in working together. And on that note, I'm about to turn it over to Rebecca Taylor, our, again, our elementary coordinator for special education. But on that note, I want to talk about you a little bit. I'm going to make you blush. So, any time as a district, when we come up with a new idea or a program, it's all about the professional development. And so, when we talked about expanding from one model to another, we need to keep in mind where our teachers are at, where they're going to go, how can we support them? And a lot of times, districts will hire an outside professional developer to come in, and sometimes that's the right choice. It depends on where you're at and where you need to be and the expertise that's required to get there. But with this particular program, it really seemed important to have someone that really understood instruction and integrated co-teaching, how to meet the needs of all the children sitting in front of us. We always say, "We don't teach to who we think should be sitting in front of us." We look at the children sitting in front of us, what their needs are, and formulate our instruction for them. And so, with that in mind, what would be the best way to give our teachers consistent, valuable support on a regular basis, as well as our principals? And what person would have the skillset to do that? And we were so fortunate, and I have to thank you, Rebecca, for Rebecca joining our team at the end of the school year last year and working with me to get us off to such a great start for the school year in being open to coming to us in May, towards the end of the school year, so that we could work together and plan this out. And the incredible work that you've done, it's been so much work, being in the buildings every single day and working with teachers on this program and making, helping them to feel supported, that we didn't just provide training maybe for one day and then someone comes back a month later. What about that month in between when they have questions? And we were so fortunate to have you in this position. And so, I'm going to thank you for that and turn it over to you so you could speak to your experience.
Thank you. So, very kind. I just have to say, like, it's such an honor to just be here together and kind of talk about all the celebrations in terms of what everyone has done on so many layers, in terms of, you know, I'm in all these different buildings and just walking into the building, you know, like, the security guards, the custodians, all the support staff, TAs, aides, the incredible support of the secretaries and the principals and administration as a whole. And of course, you know, the Board of Ed in terms of just rolling out this program in really an intentional way to provide the teachers with great support. And the teachers, it's amazing just being able to build these connections with everyone and just watching everybody grow and flourish and really dig deep in terms of how we can support students, how we can grow and how we can build upon. And I just think about, you know, what these two teachers just shared in this video in terms of, you know, here we are, here's the celebration, but like, what an exciting point to grow upon that. And, you know, Jeannie mentioned, you know, pictures are worth a thousand words. And I look at these pictures as I go through this presentation, and it's not just the words. For me, it's also the feeling in terms of looking at, you know, the experiences as I look at, you know, going around to the different buildings and thinking about where we were in September, where we were in June, when we first started, you know, the introductory PDs and conversations, and where we are now and how exciting it is. You know, and in terms of each grade level, how it looks, it might look different, even in each building and even in each classroom, but everyone is really going above and beyond in such an incredible way. And in terms of the small group work and meeting the needs of all students, you know, regardless of what level they're on, what they bring to the table in terms of their background, but just really encouraging everybody to grow from where they are and pushing them to be, you know, at the next level. And, you know, I just, one of the pictures up here, it's a fifth grade classroom, and it was so exciting for me to be able to go into that classroom a week ago and just the collaboration and the conversation in terms of, you know, here are all these things that we're doing and we're trying, and how do we shift and how do we grow upon it? And I think that's the piece that I have to recognize the most in terms of the skillset of the teachers and how much they really do go above and beyond every single day and really embrace any of these concepts that are brought to them, and they really, you know, work to implement them. And, you know, I look at the two faces of these two first grade teachers at Covert, and it's genuine smiles, you know, when you go in and out of these classrooms and the excitement and just being able to have two teachers in the room, like, even just like, all that more contact time that you get to have that children so very much crave, you know, not just on an emotional level, but then also being able to grow academically. So, it is very much a celebration and very excited about, you know, all these pieces.
Yeah, and if we look at the pictures on the board, we see random classroom shots taken, and if you notice, the students are in, working in small groups. So, these are general ed students, our classified students, and every lesson that the teachers are working on, they're breaking the students into groups, enriching the students, giving the students support and remediation where need be, and working from there, which is exactly what we hope to see at this point. We're actually beyond where we hope to see in our board goal based on, you know, research and usually change takes three to five years. There's a mindset change that almost the whole first year, you could just spend on mindset, but that was not the case. We were, we were past that and working on situations like this, where we're working with small groups by October, November, December, and really working through all six models of co-teaching, which was even beyond where we expected to be this year. And again, I think that speaks to your incredible work and the support of our principals and the dedication that our teachers had to making this program be successful. And so, some of our achievements, if we think back to the beginning of the year, we talked about creating an environment of us, which I spoke to in the beginning of the presentation. Students identify both the special ed and the general ed teacher as classroom teachers. When they send out letters, it's from both teachers. When you walk past the classroom, both names are on the sign outside the door. So, from things like that, that might seem minor, but it's those subtle decisions that we make, thoughtful decisions to present ourselves as a team, that really resonates with the children, but also their parents and the staff in the building as well. And when we're instructing students, it's not, okay, the classified students are only going with the special ed students. Lessons are created based on the children, who's sitting in front of us, where we're at, where we need to go, and how we're utilizing the skills of both teachers to create small group work so that everyone is having their needs met and they have more contact time. And through training and dedication to their craft, our teachers have successfully implemented the models of co-teaching, which again, typically you might see at the end of the first year of a co-teaching expansion like this, teachers, maybe we've created an environment of us and you might see one teach, one assist, and maybe one other model. I think we feel strongly that we've mastered at least four of the models of co-teaching of the six at this point, meaning that the teachers can look at the standards, think on the students sitting in front of them, co-plan a lesson together, deliver the lesson, and then be reflective upon that with very little support from us or from Rebecca at this point. And now, we're just working on the last one or two models of co-teaching, which is really incredible. And it really has been a lot of work for our teachers, but I think, like anything, we're in this field because we care about children, we want to do great things for kids, and when you see that your students are doing well, it makes you, it's an addictive process. You want to do more, you want to learn more, you want to do more. And so, they kind of took it and flew on their own. So, we really have to thank our teachers again for that. And our instructions co-planned, which means, which means that the teachers are really working together. It's not that the special ed teacher is coming in after the fact and trying to figure out, okay, how am I using my skillset to make this work? They're truly planning together, and we're seeing student success. So, what does that look like from the realm of both general ed and special ed? So, for general ed, our students are getting lots of interventions that they might need. You know, just because a student is not classified doesn't, doesn't mean that they don't need academic support or interventions. So, by the nature of the model, students, general ed students are benefiting from having the additional teacher in the room. And our special ed students are benefiting from having the contact and working on, with the special ed teacher and the general ed teacher and working on their goals all day. Because these goals that we have, again, could be in four or five domains of learning, and it's much, much more productive to address them over the course of a day. And because of that, based on our outcomes and our predictions for annuals, we expect that 99% of our students at the elementary level will not need more restrictive services or if anything, may need less, meaning that they're having their needs met, we don't need to add additional special education services to make up for potentially a lack of teacher contact time during their core subjects, which is really very exciting to see. And again, if you look at these pictures, I think you can see it's such a natural environment at this point, when you're looking at them, you can't tell who is the general ed teacher, who's the special ed teacher. It really presents as a general education classroom with children and two adults in the way that they're working together. And we also see the way the classrooms are devised, they're set up for small group work and station teaching. So, just even the environment of the classroom has been designed to support that.
I think it's been exciting just in terms of the process of training and growth and how much there is that craving for it and that excitement for it. And we've really, and again, just so thankful for the principals and the secretaries for helping like coordinate so much in terms of, you know, if there's intervisitation, you know, if we have a teacher from one building who wants to go and see how different teachers in different buildings, you know, roll things out, maybe one teacher's comfort level is in reading having stations, they want to dabble in math, so figuring out, okay, who can they be paired with to start building, you know, collaborative relationships as professionals to be able to get ideas. And, you know, we've been very fortunate to be able to have, you know, trainings where teachers from across grade levels can come together and have time to share in terms of what's been something that's been great and exciting in terms of group work or parallel teaching or whatever it might be, and what's something that you want to build upon. And, you know, being able to have those opportunities to share out and even for teachers across district to start building those relationships, right? Because we have different students in front of us every single year. And so, being able to have that community of professionals to really, you know, brainstorm in terms of how do we best approach, you know, the students that we have. So, it's been really exciting in terms of the training opportunities and just the conversations and, you know, thinking about, you know, how we are, you know, at this point, this year, but then also where are we going, you know, forward thinking? Because we do know that this is a process where, you know, the rollout was very intentional, you know, in terms of thinking about, okay, where we were in June, where we were in August, having these conversations, you know, making sure that we're having these morning meetings, you know, at the beginning of the year in the fall to make sure everybody is on the same page and getting the same message. You know, me having a very exciting opportunity to push into classrooms, conversate with teachers, build training based on where people were at. And it's one of those things that you don't know exactly what people need until you're into the midst of it. And it's incredible because I don't think either one of us expected people to be, you know, at the place they are right now. But, you know, us working together and planning in terms of thinking, okay, here's where everybody is, working with the principals, working with all the administrators, what's our plan for next year? And really, at this point, being intentional about how do we lay that out? So, we continue to build upon this. So, we've really made it a program that's solid and for the teachers, for the students, so really holistically as a district, it's a great level of growth.
And how are we measuring success? So, again, this is, this was a goal plan last year, it's a board goal this year, the rollout of this program. So, it's multifaceted, like we would measure anything, right? There's no one cut and dry measurement. We look at observations, so when we go in and observe classes, we're looking for certain criteria that I've previously mentioned. Is there an environment that is conducive for true collaborative setting? Do we see both teachers participating in planning and teaching and support of students who require additional help in whatever area it might be? Could be academics, could be social, emotional, or management. And so, we're looking at that, we're looking at analysis of goal and performance data. So, when students have an IEP, they have goals, we collect data on those goals throughout the year on a regular schedule. We analyze that and look at it and ask ourselves, have students met their goal for the year? And that's, that's our commitment when we choose those goals at annuals. Sometimes if students are not really progressing towards a goal in a way that we feel comfortable, we have to amend the goals, like November, December. We, that's, that's not atypical, yet we didn't see that this year. Students were really working towards their goals, there was a healthy amount of goal data, and that really showed that they were making academic growth. And that goes beyond all the incredible data that's being collected through NWEA and Fanta's Penel and all of that. This is specific to classified students and the additional data we collect on their progress, and we really feel very satisfied with that. Our parent reflections. So, last year where we did have a number of parents speak to concerns, where they, they know Rockville Center is a wonderful district and their kids were getting really good instruction. I do think we had parents that, that did speak to wanting a full-time ICT program, and I cannot tell you how many parents made appointments with us in our office just to come in and tell us the difference that they're seeing in their children, a little bit less anxiety about going to school, more confidence, coming home and being ready to complete homework independently, that they've gotten the prerequisite skills that they've needed. And things like that, that when you add it all up, really makes the journey of a child with a disability, you know, a much easier one and a productive one. And so, we've seen that. Our teachers, I think by and large, as we meet with our teachers, they're, they're so happy with the program. Our special education teachers feel really for the first time that they're a classroom teacher and have the name on their door and, you know, which is so important to them as, so, it's, it sounds so small. They're so invested in, in teaching all day and working with their co-teacher all day and being a part of all of this. But as, as someone who's a staff member in the building, that does mean something to them, and they have mentioned that, that they really do feel that their skills are being utilized in a, in a more complete fashion. And evidence of student engagement, when we're, when we're working with students, many of our students have attention needs, and we're finding that students have a higher level engagement and a lower incidence of off-task behaviors because lessons are created in a much more individualized fashion and delivered in small group, which we know, if you have a student with attention deficit and you have them in a group of three or five as opposed to in a large group, that, that makes a difference for students with that particular need. And a positive impact on general education, like, as we said, in addition to getting feedback from our teachers, that students are getting more support, our referrals for special education and classification are down significantly this year, and we feel that that's also because students are making adequate growth and they're presenting in a way that their teachers feel satisfied with the growth they're making. Many of our referrals are building referrals, meaning that there's concern at the building level and they'd like their students to be tested and possibly be given special education services, and that number is way down from last year. I would say it's at least a 50% decrease in referrals, which is very exciting as well that we're supporting the needs of our students through general education.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think just building upon it, just really meeting the needs of every learner, really pushing them to be, you know, to the next level. And I know if we can talk a little bit in terms of this picture, I think in terms of building upon what Jeannie was just saying in terms of having that community of us and having both teachers really very much involved in the lives of the children that are in the room and knowing them so well. And, you know, obviously, me coming onto this journey at Rockville Center in terms of through the rollout of ICT, you know, like, I've had the conversations with teachers in terms of, you know, if it was, you know, my classroom and then they push in, and even though there's such love and respect for all teachers, of course, now, just looking at the picture, we're looking at, we have a general education teacher and a special education teacher in the picture, just both, both teachers really co-planning, looking at how do we approach students, how do we approach parents? So, there's just really like that team building to be able to think about, you know, how do we make the most of the environment that we have to really enhance the learning for all of our students? And just having that with, with two professionals in the room is such an exciting opportunity.
And if you look at the picture and I asked you, could you tell me who the special ed teacher is? Can you tell me who the general ed teacher is?
And just having that with, with two professionals in the room is such an exciting opportunity.
And if you look at the picture and I asked you, could you tell me who the special ed teacher is? Can you tell me who the general ed teacher is? And can you tell me who the classified children are? And I think it would be no to all of those questions. And that's exactly what we hoped to, to accomplish. And I shared this picture the other day. I was here for a training with one of our elementary principals. And I said, what's different about this picture from last year? And he looked at me and he said, this would have been a classroom of students with just a general ed teacher last year. And again, our programs were very good and we were doing great things for kids, but it's just a different way of working with all of the students in a way that we can meet the needs of everyone and no one feel marginalized and maximizing the incredible staff that we have. And we do have, if, this is one thing that I, I do feel as part of this presentation that we really have to recognize, is the dedication of our principals and our teachers, which has been incredible. The amount of work that they put in to make this program successful, it just can't be under acknowledged and I, I really have to thank them for that. And I don't know if you want to go? You want to say? Okay. And the journey continues. So for next year is year two. Again, it's a three to five-year plan. So we expect next year to continue our professional development with our teachers. After the first year, again, we're circling back. We'll be reviewing the six models of co-teaching, taking our co-planning to a higher level. So it's, it's almost like breaking down, you know, to, to breaking something down into pieces. So you can always go deeper and deeper and deeper and specialize and customize your instruction more. And that would be our goal for next year for our teachers, as well as seeing a mastery of all six models, which right now, you know, we're around four or so. And, and that's the excitement for next year for elementary. Do any of your personal, want to add any goals for you?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just say in terms of building upon, right? Like, everyone has been beyond successful in terms of what they've done. But then how do we take and craft it in a way that it really becomes, you know, an area of growth and celebrate, continued celebration, right? Because we've really gone above and beyond. And, you know, I just, again, have to just say how much I appreciate the teachers, because our program can't be what it is without the incredible efforts that the teachers put in every single day, day in and day out, and the support of the principals. And I think for me, that's, that's a big factor in the success that's happened.
And of course, we can't forget, last year, Mr. Bartels, as our interim superintendent, you were so supportive. You listened to me talking about this every day and heard me out and helped me, you know, organize all of this and roll it out. And I can't thank you enough. And we really need to recognize you. And then, of course, Mr. Gavin coming in in September, as it was all happening, being, well, July, I should say, being such a wonderful support to us. And we really appreciate you being there as we, we watched this all roll out and, you know, made sure that we saw it through with the support that we needed. So we have to thank you both for that as well before we finish.
Thank you. Jeannie, first and foremost, I want to thank you for initiating a seismic shift in our instructional model. And not only is it a seismic shift, it is a positive one. And I think that, you know, your work here is really exemplary and I thank you for it. Most importantly, I think it started with conversation and listening. You talked about that at the beginning of the presentation, that you did a lot of listening. And then you had, that came from conversations with parents, with teachers, with administrators, with Mr. Bartels every day. But it was a conversation about what serves the best needs, what is the best service for our kids? And I think that the, the model is the appropriate one. I think that the board deserves foresight and Mr. Bartels deserves recognition for seeing that this was the right way to do it and providing the support in terms of monetary support for new positions for next year. So we thank everyone for that. The other piece that I, that I loved about the presentation, it was probably my favorite thing, was that idea of environment of us. That there, the environment of us really speaks to not just that we're a team, and we always talk about team, we celebrated teams today, but it also speaks about the idea of we're accountable to each other, too. And there's an, there's that element of, you know, with co-teachers, and both of you know this really well, that we are responsible to each other, but we're ultimately responsible to the needs of, meeting the needs of the learners in our classroom. And I think, you know, that, that idea of, of us is a really important piece. I love the way you guys picked that out, that whole, that brand of it. It was really excellent. The other, the other thing that I, that I think, you know, Rebecca, you really need to be highlighted on is there is a tremendous amount of professional learning that takes place. There are some co-teachers that have been teaching by themselves for a very long period of time, and it requires a mind shift in terms of their, their paradigm. It requires co-planning, and I, I think you guys actually undersold how much it, how much work it is for co-planning. For the first time ever, you know, you, you are responsible for working with a partner, for working together and for delivering content and a lesson that is aligned to standards and meets the needs of the, the IEPs of the students that are in the class. So that is a tremendous, a tremendous amount of work. And I appreciate the fact that, I think it was like my second or third day here, where we were already in training, where we were starting to, to see the results of that. So you led that training, both of you did a great job with that. And the fact that we continue to support student, teachers in the classroom with this model is extraordinarily important. I'll give you an example. If one of the teachers, or a group of teachers is struggling with one of the models, Rebecca goes in and models it the first time, this is how it could work. So let's go, and then we unpack it. We go through a reflection process. Let me watch you do it now. So I did it, now you can do it. And then after you do it, let's talk about it and let's get better. So that is a culture shift, 100% it's a culture shift, but it's also in line with what we've been talking about as a board in terms of a process of continuous improvement all the way through. Jeannie talked about the idea that this is a three to five-year endeavor to, to really get this program embedded in what we do and how we do it. And that's one of the things that, you know, I think is really important for us to consider going forward for next year when we think about goals. A lot of our goals are going to end up being multi-year goals, because some of these things are started this year, but we have much more work to do. Next year, there's even a more difficult task. We have a bigger mountain to climb with co-teaching as we start to tackle the secondary level in middle school and high school, where elementary, it's a more natural fit. Sometimes at the secondary level, it has to be, you know, really thought out and intentional on how we do it. So you guys have a lot of work to do for next year, but I think it's worthwhile work and I thank you for it, so greatly appreciated. I'll turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Love and Ms. Taylor, for your presentation. It feels like yesterday you were presenting to us on the different models and the balloons in the auditorium, and now here you are showing us the next steps in that process.
We thought about it.
Yeah, I forgot about the balloon.
We very much appreciate you sharing the next steps in this process with us and with the community here tonight. And I have some similar thoughts, but I love the inter visitation idea and the fact that we're encouraging our wonderful teachers, as you've complimented them often throughout the presentation, to learning from each one another, inter-grade level and across buildings. I think that's really important. I'm glad to hear that that's happening and I hope that continues to happen. And I really appreciate the measurable examples in terms of the tangible, what you look for to measure success in the classroom. I think that's important for us to gain a sense of, you're in the classroom and you're assessing and the teachers are learning, but it's, what does that look like for us as parents or community members, you know, in those classrooms? So thank you for including that as well. I'll turn it over to the board for questions or comments.
I, I just want to say thank you. I know the tremendous amount of work that this took when we rolled it out and we discussed doing it. Not only is it a culture shift, but there is so much that needed to be done in terms of professional development. The ask on the teachers to get on board and be able to do this, and they all rose to the occasion. And so your little balloon children from last year have turned into real vision and it's amazing. I think that the most important thing for me, sitting here and being in PTA for so many years, listening to parents talk about having their kids be pulled out for AIS, for academic intervention, or for specials, and how that model is affecting their children, being absent from the classroom, missing other things that went on in the classroom, and how beautifully this has created an environment where that doesn't have to happen. They're not missing instruction and yet they're getting everything they need in the classroom from two dedicated professionals. So I'm very happy to hear that you've said that parents have contacted you about that, because I think that was a really big, one of the really big reasons why we considered doing this as a district. So thank you both.
Yeah, I agree. It's nice also to have a, it's like a tag team presentation from the beginning of the year toward the end. That was one of my favorite presentations of the year, I will tell you. I'm a visual learner and I feel, feel that the way that you set it up, as it was happening to kind of teach us, what you were teaching the teachers was really helpful. And now just the visual, again, of getting to see the children working together with the teachers, it just kind of comes full circle. So thank you for coming back and doing that. Rebecca, I said this the last time, you've been such a great addition to our team. We really thank you for everything. And Mrs. Love, from out of the gate, just listening to parents, the way you've taken them in. One of the things I liked the best about what you were talking about was the growth. So it is year one, we're already doing well. You're seeing this decrease in referrals, which is wonderful to hear. But I imagine that it's going to help so much in intelligence for your placements for next year, because now you're seeing the dynamic of just the classroom, these teachers together, which teachers are working in great tandem. I hope they all are, I'm sure they are, because they're phenomenal. But also how every student is being affected by this model and who is the greatest makeup for it for next year, right? Because when we have class placements in elementary, I think it's so, so much goes into that, I know, at that level. And I think that you're just gaining so much more intelligence from two teachers observing all of these children every day. So I'm excited for that growth and to see that come into play. That being said, do you have a sense of how many sections of ICT you're looking at for elementary for next year? Are we looking at the same amount? Because one thing I know parents have said in the past is they don't want special education students to be looked at as a number. They want them to be looked at for their individual needs. So when you look at an ICT class, the makeup of that class, we don't want to say, oh, every ICT class should have four special ed students, and that's the formula. But who's in the class and what do they need? And help that make the makeup of what we're forecasting for next year. So I'm curious as to, is that into play yet of how many sections you're forecasting for next year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we start working on that around, believe it or not, around November, and then we just are constantly updating. So we meet with the psychologists and the principals on a regular basis to go through, you know, we do projections for our annual review. And the numbers are, it's roughly one section per grade across the district that, it's on, based on enrollment. So, you know, this year we had a section in a building that became two sections because of the enrollment. Next year, that, that class is moving to the middle school, so the upcoming group for fifth grade will be one section, because that's what we have. And so we look at that, there's one or two sections in the kindergarten level where there's, where there's low enrollment, where we may not need a section, or the section might be quite small. But again, that's, it's all based on the numbers of kids, how many kids are, that we have that have this on their IEP. And by and large, through the district, it's roughly one section per grade, which we'll maintain for next year. Typically, you'll see at the intermediate level, they get a little bit bigger, because we do have to follow regulations. So we're giving kids interventions, we're making sure they're getting everything they need. And sometimes second or third grade, if we're not able to meet their needs through our intervention model, we may test students and we'll say they've exhausted every, every intervention that we have, and perhaps this is a referral, we'd like to test this student. And that's why at grades three, four, and five, you will, you will see a few more students in the intermediate sections for that reason. But they still maintain around one section per grade, and we have really nice numbers. We're so fortunate to have it in the, the program in every building. So we're not living near, like, the, the 12 would be the limit through the, the state. You know, our average section, I would say, is between five and six, I would say, on average. So some might be a little bit more, some might be a little bit less, but we're really living in the sweet spot for the program, which also helps us, it's just so, works so beautifully because of that.
I appreciate that. And I think parents will appreciate that their students will be accommodated by this model, no matter what grade level they're on, no matter which elementary school, because we're trying to keep that consistency. So I think that's a beautiful thing. And then just feeding into that secondary ICT model, I think this is going to be so helpful as well to have that information.
Yeah, and the plan would be that come September, I know, you know, we had discussed this, Mr. Gavin and I, that we'll do a presentation much like the one Rebecca and I did with our secondary staff. So what's really exciting for secondary is that while Rebecca's working on tier U with tier two, year two for elementary, which is so much work, at the elementary level, we have assistant principals, we have our principals, we have facilitators, we have, you know, so we can use our faculty meetings, our department meetings, and I've already started meeting with Dr. Walsh and Ms. McGinn on a year-long PD, what the plan would be for that, month by month, what the topics would be. So the, the presentation will have a similar structure to the one that we did, but with a secondary flair. So maybe not balloons, but who knows what we'll bring? We'll see. But that will be the plan for secondary for next year.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. On that note, the idea that so many different groups come together to make this a success, right? The students, the parents, the teachers, the support staff, the service providers under your direction and leadership. And it's really thrilling to hear how it's all coming to fruition. And I, I think an important piece, just as important perhaps as the professional development, is also the parent education, right? So explaining to parents how this works, whether or not you have a student who has an IEP or any sort of, you know, special ed needs, a general education student could be in an ICT class. And although it's in, ICT is in every elementary building, potentially not every grade every year, right? So your experience may change from year to year?
Right, you could be in an ICT section as a general ed student one year, but not the next year, based on, on how you're placed and the number of sections.
Right. And so I wanted to thank you for your participation in Parent University and sort of encourage you to maybe consider more and more ways to educate all of our parents, because it's really such an indicator of the truly inclusive education that Rockville Center's been known for, for such a long time. And I wonder if there's a way, or have you considered sort of articulation meetings between, say, the students who are in fifth grade, who are then moving to the middle school, and what that would look like from one ICT to the next?
So for CSC, from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth, also preschool to K. So every transition, we have psychologists from both buildings participate, and that way they can speak to, this is where the student's coming from. And then the psychologist who will be inheriting the student can speak to the programs at the building the student's going to. And then typically, we would have support staff, so typically guidance. So for example, today I happened to sit in on an eighth grade CSC, and there was a high school guidance counselor, the high school psychologist, in addition to the middle school staff. And they do pre-CSE work with parents, but at the CSC itself as well, those people are available. And then they do transition work as far as visitation and things like that for, you know, the building as a whole.
Good. And could you just, in sort of plain language, just because I saw that term least restrictive environment, LRE, could you just explain that in plain language?
Sure. So least restrictive means as close to general education as you can be and still receive services. Meaning every student has a right to be in as close to general education as possible. And so for every step that we add services where we're removing students from that setting, we are reducing their lease, you know, we're increasing the amount of time that they've been removed from the general ed setting. And so the regulations, which people always roll their eyes at the special education regulations, but they're really a beautiful thing and they're designed to protect students' rights. And where there's framework there, there's also gray that we can work with that will help us meet the needs of students. But at the end of the day, they're really written to preserve that if a student presents with an issue, you can't just take them and remove them to a very restrictive or an environment that's really removed from the general education class. The goal of the regs is to encourage us that with, with everything we have, we give all of our resources and all of our heart and all of our hard work to ensuring that students can stay in as close to general education as possible. And that's really the heart, the spirit of the law with least restrictive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gavin, we're going to turn over to the budget presentation?
Correct. You got it? You got it? Yeah, great. Mr. Bartels is here to provide the latest update on our budget presentation this evening, where we have made some changes on the budget. And you'll see in there that includes adding additional, moving additional monies over to security, like we spoke about in my initial superintendent's report. In this presentation, you'll see that initially we had thought about the idea of putting it into hardware, in terms of security hardware. But in conversations with the board, in conversations with Mr. Bartels, one of the things we could also put that into, since we're not really nailed down to it right now, is the potential of now, is the potential of hiring perhaps a director of security with law enforcement background. And that's one of the things that we would like to do in terms of using this additional money to kind of look to see if we can find someone with that law, form of law enforcement, a law enforcement background, that can work and coordinate all the efforts of our security. So, you'll see it says like electronics, or it'll say like security equipment. But again, in conversations altogether, I think we've moved towards kind of making an amendment to that. Mr. Bartels?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Gavin. So, I just want to do a short budget update tonight. Go through the budget schedule again, show where we are, talk about the updates, as Mr. Gavin mentioned, that we have, and kind of review the budget summary. So, we're now getting close to the end of our budget review process. We have, after tonight, the preliminary budget hearing on April 18th. That'll be the last chance we have to make any changes to the budget, and then we will finalize that and adopt it for the vote. On May 3rd, we have a formal budget hearing, which is a requirement by the state, but we, there's nothing we can do for the budget as far as making changes to it at that time. And then on May 16th, we have the annual election and budget vote. That is here at Southside High School in the main gym from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I just want to mention also, all these presentations that I'm doing tonight and in the prior budget sessions are all on the district website. So, if anybody's missed them or is looking for some more detailed information, they are all available on the district website. So, slide may be a little small for people in the audience. So, these are the different budget updates that I have from what we've presented. I've kind of listed them in terms of what description of the budget code they are, where you can find them within the budget document, which is also on the district website. And that goes by a function, object, location, program code. So, you can kind of follow that. The three columns to the right, I have our original budget, what's in the proposed budget right now, the changes that I'm proposing tonight, and then what that particular line's revised budget total would be. So, the first one is special ed tuitions at BOSEs. We had just recently, a new resident moved in that attends BOSEs. And we have some concerns about some of the other students that we had at BOSEs as far as removing them from those programs. We want to also make sure we have enough funding in case somebody else moves into the district. So, we wanted to add $300,000 to that budget line to make sure there is enough money in there. For DECA support, our program this year has done absolutely fabulous with the students qualifying for states and now nationals. We had allocated originally $25,000, want to pump that by $15,000 to allocate $40,000 for them to help offset the cost of those trips and support that program. Computer software, this probably should be done toward the bottom with some of the others. This is a reduction of $15,000. There's a certain program we were thinking about utilizing next year, we're not going to be using. So, that's going to be a reduction of $15,000 in that line. The next two budget lines are the cost of natural gas, as everybody's seen in their homes. We've had the same increases here in the district in the cost of gas and electric. We had a number of increases in those budget lines, but after seeing, projecting where we're going to be at the end of this year, specifically for the middle school and the high school, we need to increase those particular budget lines. Another $30,000 for the middle school, another $20,000 for the high school. Security programs. Again, the tragedy in Nashville got us relooking at these programs again. So, what we're looking to do is instead of, typically we have at the elementary schools, a security guard in each elementary school. They finish at the end of the day, and that's usually it. We wanted to make sure there was additional funding for them to have additional security after school and into evening programs as well. So, we've increased each of those pieces. At the middle school, we wanted to make sure that, here at the high school, we have a security guard which is here all night. We want to do the same thing for the middle schools. We want to make sure we have another person available for middle school programs. Building is constantly used by other outside groups as well as our own. We have a lot of our elementary schools use that, you know, coming up for programs that they use to send people to the middle school. So, we wanted to make sure there was enough staffing on hand there at night to add some additional security there. And as Mr. Gavin had said, we had another $100,000 in terms of security upgrades. We were thinking hardware, how can we, you know, secure the buildings a little bit better? But in talking about it, we're thinking maybe a security director might be better, kind of coordinate the security district wide. We've had issues with substitutes. This person would be able to easily take care of that, as well as issues around school buildings on weekends, nights and weekends, and over the summer. So, that's, that's always a concern we have. We have additional staff members working overtime to kind of keep controls. This would, this would help put some additional enforcement on that, on that security. How are we funding these increases? Legal services, we're expecting to be down. We've had a couple of settlements that we had this year. We're not expecting to have any real settlements for next year. So, we should expect that budget line to be down, about $100,000. Retirement breakage, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, we got people that we expecting to get retire, also some surprise retirements. So, the overall breakage that we're going to have will be closer to $1 million. So, we want to use that to fund some of these other budget changes. The employees' retirement system contributions, as opposed to the teachers' retirement contributions, which have gone up a little bit. The employees' retirement system contributions for our civil service employees have come down a little bit. So, we'll be able to save $100,000 in that budget line. And then finally, workers' compensation, we've had a lower experience over the last several years, which has benefited the district. And we're actually seeing a reduction in our premium for next year. So, we'll be able to reduce that budget line by $60,000. So, the net impact of all these changes is a net zero on the budget. So, the budget itself stays the same. So, the budget will still be 5.74% that we're recommending, which brings a tax levy of a 1.99% increase. That will be under the tax cap. Our tax cap for this year is 2.21% based on the calculations, the way the state calculates that. It's not just what the CPI increase is, which is a misconception of a lot of people. So, the maximum increase in the CPI for this year was 2%. But there are other additions and reductions that change that overall number. So, but we are under that cap for next year. Based on reporting news day from all school districts, the average Long Island tax increase is going to be about that 2.21%. So, we are well under that. We are in the bottom third on Long Island of tax increases. So, probably at the top end.
The top part of the bottom third, but we're at the bottom third, yeah.
We have, we're going to be utilizing $2.5 million from our fund balance for capital projects. It's a one-time use of reserves. We've built that up over the last couple of years. We want to put that to good use and address some needed capital projects, mainly the middle school roof replacement and putting in a turf field at Southside Middle School. Two very important projects. Majority of that will be covered from that undesignated fund balance. That also includes capital projects for facility improvements in all of our buildings. So, there's some smaller upgrades. We've talked about them at other built, at other budget presentations. So, some flooring, ceiling replacements, and bathroom upgrades around the district. Again, listing of all those is available on the district website. Again, we're happy to say no program cuts for next year while we are expanding offerings in school and after school. So, we're adding programs like coding, increasing support for robotics. We have additional clubs after school. We're adding some more additional teams next year. So, we're continuing to provide more opportunities for students. We're going to continue to maintain all the staffing and support programs that we were able to put in place through our COVID funding. So, we want to continue to provide all those support structures to keep that in place. So, our after-school programs, all the staffing that we've had, Wizards Program after school, continued support for Regents Review, just continue as much as we can for all of our struggling students. And again, the last big item was the additional allocations for security. Just felt it was necessary to do that at this time. That's my update.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I, I really appreciate the work that we've been able to do together and your, your sound financial management that has put us in a good place where we can transfer money out of savings and do it in a fiscally responsible way for meeting the needs of the district. Moreover, you know, it is, the way we were able to move money within the budget this time to make sure that we can address needed security upgrades, I think was really important. So, I really appreciate the work, and I'll turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
With the Director of Security, the items that we were considering using for the technology portion.
Yep.
I know you've thought a lot about why you think this is a better use of those funds. If you could just speak to it a little.
Sure.
So, people understand why we have this in there and we think it's more important to do that.
Well, a couple of things that we originally talked about with Mike Anderson, myself, Mr. Schlesian, Mr. Bartels, and along with Mr. Murphy, we had thought about the idea of like door-a-jar system, where the door is, if it comes open, there's an alarm that goes through, it's all network, it's wired. That would be one of the systems we were, we were thinking about. That's would roughly be between $60,000 and $80,000. But really, when, in response to other conversations we've had with our, our law enforcement, like Commissioner Ryder, Commissioner Vafides, they really talk more about visibility rather than technology. So, we want someone that can really work with all of our security guards to make sure that we are as visible as we possibly can, because we know from, from unfortunately the tragedies that have happened before, that that is a real deterrent. And so, we want someone that can oversee all of that visibility. We want someone that can oversee making sure that we're thinking strategically about how we use our security guards, particularly here in the high school and the middle school, what, how they should be walking through the building, what patterns do they see, how they work with building administration. I think that's really why we want to do it. And we want someone, quite honestly, with law enforcement background, that can stay current with all of the other law enforcement agencies and make sure that we stay current. Because I can tell you that the tactics have changed probably eight times. And what they, what they ask school districts to do in response to a shooting, anywhere from, you know, pre-Columbine where they would say, call the hostage negotiator and everybody wait, to what we saw in Nashville, which is, go right now. So, all of those tactics inform what we do here in the buildings. And I, I think it's a positive for the district to have somebody coordinate that security and make sure that our, our people are up to date, that we're constantly looking to make sure that we are following best practice.
Would that person be a liaison with local law enforcement and planning?
They could absolutely serve as that. I would still probably have both Mr. Bartels, Mr. Murphy, myself, Mr. Schlesian, and Mr. Anderson are all part of it because we have technology, we have facilities, we have finance, and we have human resources all as a part of it too. So, there's a little piece of security that kind of touches everybody. But that person would be our primary contact for law enforcement.
Thank you.
And as you stated earlier, this is something that's always on our minds and always changing. And as the needs are changing and your recommendations, right now you feel this is the best use of these resources at this time, but doesn't preclude you from continuing to investigate hardware and other things in the future, correct?
Correct, yeah. And if there was something that would be, you know, much more expensive, like a, like a real technology upgrade, that would be something we would consider in the process for budget next year. Or we might consider if it was in the scope of a bond, if we were ever going to do a bond, that would be, you know, if it's a big expenditure, that would be something that we could do down the road.
I did also want to mention, you know, just at this time, we did go through a big upgrade in our security cameras this year through the smart bond. So, in addition to increasing the capacity of the cameras, we've gotten more, better quality cameras, and we also added additional cameras.
It's like $543,000 worth of upgrades in security last year. This is an additional piece to that.
So, it is always on our mind, and we're continuing to look for different ways to better secure our buildings.
I understand and support the idea of bringing on that person, but I just also don't want to treat it that we're pitting one over the other. I think I would ask for us to constantly, not even just wait for another budget or a bond, but, you know, I had asked about smart bond money at the last meeting, and we talked about that. I mean, sometimes we are granted opportunities to add things through other methods besides just the budget. But when it comes to security, I have to be honest, I wouldn't want us to ever replace one idea for the other in terms of importance. I think that we should pursue some of those.
It's like a yes and approach kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like it has, I liken it to when we went to the site visit at Watson, and we talked about the security issue with the alert system in the gym. We said, we're doing that right now. That's not a capital project, that doesn't have to be in next year's budget. And I liken school security to that same notion where we don't want to wait until we say, oh, we don't have the money for that. Our kids' security and safety, I think, is just number one always. So, I would ask that while we do pursue the person, and I love the idea, I think, having that person owning this and being on top of it and educating everybody the same way should happen. But that door-a-jar system, if it's a possibility, and it would make us safer, or do something for our schools that's positive, that we continue to pursue it and find a way, that would be how I feel personally.
I agree that it's something that we're continuing to look in. We're still going to get prices, right? We're still, we're going to get prices, we're going to get estimates. And we have to be strategic about how we employ it. So, for example, there's less need of a door-a-jar system at an elementary school than there is at a high school, simply because at the high school, we have an open campus. So, we want to make sure that the students are entering and exiting for, through the appropriate building, that, excuse me, appropriate door, and that our security guards are strategically employed, are deployed in the building to cover in-between periods, to make sure people aren't going out the back door, or the side door, or whatever. So, you know, that's why our initial thought was door-a-jar system, particularly for this building. So, nothing precludes us from looking at that. And then, you know, over the summer, I'm sure we'll continue to have conversations about how to make sure that we're doing what we can to make the building safe. In terms of like large expenditures, like if there was something that would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, that would be something that I would probably recommend to put into a budget. Or if it was something more than that, I would say probably a bond. But we just want to make sure that we are in line with what law enforcement tells us. And I, I can tell you that Mr. Murphy is on the phone with RBCPD all the time to make sure that we're getting the latest guidance. So, we're trying to maintain some consistency with that. The other thing to note is that we do not broadcast all of the new things that we get. So, there are certain things that people, in terms of security, are visible, but other technology may not be. So, you know, I think it's really important that even Commissioner Ryder told us the same thing. Two things are very important for a school district. Number one is visibility, number two is unpredictability. Unpredictability in terms of when local law enforcement shows up. We have constantly, I think I told the board this before, there are many, each of the sectors in Nassau County has five cars that the police assign to that sector that roll to the different schools. And that unpredictability that also allows for a lower response time, because that's what their job is. So, that's a really big piece. Nassau County's doing a great job with that, and RVC as well. I mean, if you go to any one of our schools at any time, there is a good chance, and not for the wrong reasons, that you might see a police officer out front, or a police car out front. So, you know, I think that, that unpredictability is also a big piece. And that's what they're strategically tell us to do as well.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, you're thinking about a head of security, director of security as a 12-month position?
Yeah.
And I can see how we're paying for it this year. We're making a commitment to make that a full-time.
That would be something that if we do it this year, I wouldn't say it would be a one-shot wonder. It would be something that we would commit to. And that would be part of any budgeting going forward after this year.
Good. And I think, to your point, beginning the school year in September, one of our early board, board meetings for next year, I think we would all love to have an update on security as we begin the new school year.
Yep.
I wonder, was there any update in terms of the money from the state in terms of tutoring? Or was that, we're still waiting on that?
We're still.
Still wa, still waiting on it.
Okay.
We're still expecting it's going to be knocked out, but until we get that final state budget, we're not going to.
They haven't passed the budget yet. And so, that provision right now is in the governor's budget, but not in the legislature's budget. So, we kind of have to wait to see what negotiations happen. And there is also the rumor that it's going to be a little late this year. So, I'm not 110% sure, you know. So I'm not 110% sure, you know, how to, how to kind of accurately predict what legislature and the governor are going to do. But I know that there have been conversations about removing that, that piece from there.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Turning to policies and superintendent's regulations. At stage one, attendance by board members at conferences, conventions, and workshops, policy 2310. We have one change in language here, just in terms of taking the word school out and adding district. Any comments or questions on 2310?
I think this is important to keep as is, right?
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Policy 3240, dissemination of information through students. Also at stage one. Any comments or questions there?
No.
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 Policy 4110, no revision suggested, administrative personnel. Any...
We've looked at it since 2002. That's great.
Trying to stay current. Trying to stay current.
This is just part of our regular review of our manual, yes.
It hasn't changed, though. We don't have any suggestions.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, right. It's a solid policy, but we should look at it, right? It's a solid policy.
We want to make sure that what we are doing, it does say revise.
Yes.
Often what happens is a board didn't review it.
And didn't state it.
No change.
They didn't say revise.
Right.
Right, right.
Or, you know, sometimes the decision says revise, but they're like, you look at.
Reviewed.
Reviewed, yep.
But it's important to put that so you know that it has been looked at.
Got it. Thank you. Policy 4240, administrative latitude in the absence of board policy.
Good?
Looks good. For policy 7160, it's currently at stage three. I'm going to ask that we keep it at stage three tonight, and then we'll have another reading at our next meeting on April 18th. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipts of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve board actions one through eight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting will be April 18th. Have a restful and safe break.